I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before the start of tonight's meeting, we had a budget meeting and we had a bicentennial committee meeting, and we're off to our regular meeting now. Is there any visitor or public comment tonight? Seeing or hearing none? The announcements are, we are going to next meet on May 2 at 4:00 PM. The bicentennial committee will meet on May 2 at 3:00 PM. The community yard sale is April 29, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, rain or shine, at the Central Park Tennis Court parking lot. Shoppers are free. Vendor's fee is $25. Touch a Truck is Saturday, May 6, at Central Park, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that's a free event. Home Run Derby is Thursday, May 18, at Turk Baseball Fields. Check in at 4:30 PM. The Derby starts at 5 until dusk. It's free, but you have to pre-register. Go to DoylestownRec.com. The Thompson Performing Arts Series begins on May 19. That's a Friday. It's a movie called Moana, and it starts at dusk, which is, or sundown, which is anticipated to be at 8:30, but at 7:30. There will be a Polynesian dance contest or demonstration, interactive demonstration. And the next thing on the Thompson Performing Arts Series is another movie on June 2, also a Friday, The Secret Life of Pets, which is sponsored by the Doylestown Pet, what's it called?
Medical.
Doylestown Veterinary Clinic, or whatever that is. D U M C is the, yeah, I don't know what it's called. But it's sponsored by the Doylestown Animal Clinic. So, The Secret Life of Pets. I apologize, I got that wrong. I'll fix it later. Admission is free for both movies, and the movies will be held at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park. Doylestown Township Annual Golf Outing, please register. We, I hope there are flyers over there. It's a fun outing. It's June 5, Doylestown Country Club. Registration deadline is May 15. And all proceeds for the event benefits Kids Castle. Go to DoylestownRec.com to register, or just talk to me. I'll have you registered in no time. The Environmental Advisory Council is holding its magnet fundraiser, and they're front in the administrative office, they're $5. And we're going to hold our e-cycling event through P A R Recycle Works on June 3. What does P A R stand for? Does anybody know?
It's an acronym for the, I forgot what the name is.
I can make one up.
Okay, all right.
But that's the acronym as PAR.
PAR, Recycle Works, on June 3, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Doylestown residents only, and that's at, here, Central Park, right? Here?
It'll be here.
Doylestown Township Building. Minutes' Approval is the next item on the agenda for the regular meeting on March 21, 2017. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Changes, corrections?
Make a motion when you approve the minutes?
Thank you.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda, P A Small Water and Sewer Program Grant. Thanks to Representative Marguerite Quinn and Senator Chuck McElhenney, we've been awarded a grant of $252,646 for the sewer project. And this authorizes, this will authorize me to sign for this grant. Any questions?
Should be a motion to that effect, to accept the grant and authorize your execution of the grant agreement.
I make a motion to accept this grant and that Barbara be authorized to sign it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. We'll do that. Next item on the agenda, reports from the solicitor.
I have things laid on the agenda, and I'll defer any comments till then.
Uh-huh. Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Chief, Lieutenant?
I just want to make sure the board was aware of the article that was in the Daily Intelligencer last Thursday about Bill 251, which would allow local police departments to use radar in speed enforcement details. This bill has been in the process for many, many years. I remember first starting as a police officer, and it was still being talked about today. As I said, the bill will allow local police departments to use radar. Pennsylvania is the only state in the country that will not allow local police departments to use radar. The instruments that we use now are the speedometer, where we would have to pace a vehicle for a minimum of two to three-tenths of a mile before we can enforce any speed details. Another instrument that we can use is called NRAD, which stands for Electronic Non-Radar Device, which is basically two brackets that we place on the shoulders of the roadway, which electronically measure the speed of a vehicle. The problem with this is that we have to have a two-man team to enforce these details. One, to stay with the instrument, the other one to stop the vehicle, because the instruments are quite expensive, and if nobody's standing by it, it might get stolen. The third instrument that we use is called Accutrac. Accutrac is basically a stopwatch with a computer in it. We have a known distance that we paint lines on the roadway. We activate the stopwatch when the vehicle crosses Line A, activate again, or stop the stopwatch when it crosses Line B, and then we can enforce the traffic details. Being a part, sometimes, of the traffic committee, as the chief allows, I've become quite aware of many of the complaints that residents have with traffic enforcement or speed vehicles on our roadways. If we were allowed to use radar, we could basically set up any detail at any location in the township, which will, again, assist us in providing a safe community on the roadway. That's all I have to say.
Well, we've long been supportive of the radar.
Yeah. When I, when I read this article in the paper, the thing that surprised me, or it just made me question it, there was a question there from Marguerite Quinn, and she says, "Before I would," and she, they ask her what her position was, and she says, "Well, I don't know. I'll have to go out and ask the local authorities and get some feedback from them." So, I would like to make a motion that we put in place a resolution showing our support for the use of radar.
What do you think, guys?
Well...
I think a letter would be sufficient.
I support it. I mean, I support the concept. And like Lieutenant said, I remember Chief White preaching it, and I mean, I, I mean, I won't oppose it. I just, I, as I've said in the past, I'm not in favor of getting into other areas and giving our opinions like we've done in the past, you know, like we did with the school board, and then with the state. I don't know if that's a good precedent to set. That's just my opinion.
Well, but do you support radar or not? I mean...
Personally?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay.
Personally, I do.
Margarita's soliciting comments.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know when she's going to do that.
I'm gonna, I'm happy to send her, we're happy to send her a letter if the board is authorized.
Is one stronger than the other? Does one carry more weight?
No.
No, I think it just expresses the opinion.
I just want to make sure we're communicating our support for this.
We have law, I don't know, I personally, and, it's, I spoke to the, I know, the commandant of the, of the state police three years ago about this, and they were always supportive of this. And it's only been local folks who have been opposed to it.
Right.
Because the, as the article indicates, or alludes to, that everyone thinks that the police are going to make money off, you know, speed, catching speeders. Well, that's not the issue.
It's not.
I mean, we have countless number of people speeding on, on the parkway, and there's no way of regulating that unless you're, you got your police car in a tree somewhere, and you catch the people speeding on, on the parkway.
Exactly.
So, I think it's, it's high time that it happens, and if we can do a letter of support, I'm happy to do that.
That's fine. Let's, let's, I just want to make sure something gets done.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
I think part of the problem is, we, we, I think I speak for all of us. We highly support our police department. No way are they going to, you know, this is going to happen, the abuses, so I think, I think sometimes people get confused with the rest of the, rest of the state, and that's unfortunate.
No, I agree. All right, thank you, Lieutenant. Next item on the agenda, Director of Operations?
Yes, we have a request, a letter from Plan Run Construction, basically advising us that they're withdrawing their bid to supply engineering and construction services for our fuel tanks, for our proposed campus expansion. It's dated March 30, and so, we had somewhat of an error in their understanding that they were Co-Stars approved to provide these services. They were not, so we had asked them to submit a withdrawal letter.
Okay.
The reason for that is, you, you can, you don't need to bid a project if it's on Co-Stars. So, if they're not on Co-Stars, you'd have to do a full bid before you could award the bid to them.
Got it.
So, we don't need to take any action, that's just information.
It's informational, no, because you'd be awarding the bid later on, am I right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Next item is the recommendation for awarding contracts for the municipal complex Phase One. Jim Linsky and Joe Phillips are here to speak to their letter, which they submitted to us, dated April 12. So, I'll give it to Jim.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Linsky from Phillips and Donovan Architects. As you are aware, bids were received for Phase One of the Doylestown Municipal Complex, Phase One additions and alterations. The letter you received essentially has two parts to it, an outline of bid results and contractor references, as well as a complete bid tabulation from all the bidders, from all the information supplied. Generally speaking, a summary, the general construction contract, the apparent low bidders, L.J. Paolella Construction Incorporated, with a base bid of $1,079,617. Mechanical construction contract, Low Bid Worthen Company Incorporated, $308,150. Electrical construction contract, Low Bid Trotter Industries LLC, with a base bid of Plumbing contract, Stan Roach Plumbing, $123,900. Fire protection contract from A.B.J. Sprinkler Company Incorporated, with a base bid of $62,500. Following that is a summary of interviews that took place by phone, with just some words and comments about references, or from the references, excuse me. Following that, we have the complete breakdown of all the information that was supplied from all the bidders on the Penn Bid program. If you look under General Construction, for instance, there were three bids that were submitted. One was an incomplete or a no bid, so we received two bids on that. There's a breakdown of the base bid, as well as identification of costs that were associated with that. And then at the bottom of the sheet, there is a information that was requested to be submitted along with the bid, if they provided it and if it was complete. There were two notes of interest, one under the mechanical bid, there was a bid from B&amp;E Boiler Works. Shortly after the bids were provided, they realized that their numbers were not in line with all the other contractors. They've checked their information, and they asked to have their bid withdrawn, and they had provided a letter. Essentially, they had gotten information at the last minute from a supplier, which was not included in with their base bid. So, we accepted their withdrawal. Likewise, excuse me, in the fire protection, a similar situation occurred. The low bid for the fire protection, obviously, the contractor saw where the numbers were, went and checked their numbers, and realized that they had left out a subcontractor's number. They asked to have their bid withdrawn. They had submitted a letter, and we accepted that. So, based on the information that was submitted, the sum of the low bids is $1,884,872. We feel that that was in line with the estimates that we had provided prior, and with your authorization today, we are prepared to release then letters of intent to these contractors, which will notify the contractors and then ask them to provide some additional information while we prepare contracts.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to listen to Jim and hear and review these documents. Were you, we were there, I was at the opening of the bids. We were at the opening of bids. Interesting process, everything. And I'm, thank you for following up and interviewing these folks. They all turned out to be...
Yeah, they were good references.
Good references and so on. Is there, can we, we can do these in tandem?
You can do them in tandem, just a motion to accept the apparent low responsive responsible bidders, based on the recommendation from your architect.
I'll make that motion to accept the lowest bid, based on the recommendation from the architects.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody having questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is from Township Manager Bond Proceeds, Act 10 Investments.
Yes, the board, as you know, we have a memo from Ken Wallace, our finance director, indicating that we received those bond proceeds the end of February. At the moment, they're being held in TD Bank, but we've been talking about how we can invest those properly, and with the drawdowns that are coming. At TD Bank, they're only earning .25 interest.
Who, they, us, or them?
Us, us.
Okay.
Those funds are earning.
Looks like TD Bank is earning interest at 2.25.
No, the balance at TD Bank is earning. So, we think we can do better than that. Ken received some proposals from Pliget and the Act 10 Investments, and with earnings from there, $88,696 versus $75,126. And we've met with their staff. The, they'll help with the arbitrage filings as well, and we've reviewed this with the Ways and Means Committee, and we've provided you with the Act 10 portfolio as well. This makes us compliant under the, our existing policy that we have for investment of bond funds, and the fund management policy that states that the investment of bond proceeds can follow the guidelines of Second Class Township Code, which Act 10 Investments now comply with. And we have the information from, in your, the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, in your packet. Ken is here if you have any specific questions regarding this matter, but we would ask that we be authorized to proceed.
Okay, so in short, we're going to earn more interest at, through this Pliget organization, so...
Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, just so people don't think it's a, you know, a toy company or something.
I said it.
All right. Is there a motion to move the funds from TD Bank to the Act 10 Pliget organization?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anything else?
Just one thing that's in your packet as well, is the Act 172. This is a information that's coming forth, that's, we're working through the County's Tax Collection Committee that we are a part of, along with Montgomery Counties, to develop a, basically, an ordinance that we will have to do later this year, to address earned income tax credits for volunteer fire fighters and EMS, volunteer EMS agencies, nonprofit, that can help really generate more volunteers. I mean, one of the startling information provided in the packet of information we received was that back in the '70s, about 40 years ago, we had probably over 300,000 volunteers. Today, we have about 70,000, and that's Commonwealth-wide. So, you know, it's definitely a way to incentivize people in the community, and something that I'm participating in that committee, so we'll be bringing back more information, and hopefully a standard, you know, ordinance that we can participate in. But there's a lot of information, we'll continue to keep you posted as we move through that process. And just the last thing that I have for the board is Arbor Day, April 28, we're celebration. We're working with Cutts Elementary School, and we'll be having an observance partnering with them in Central Park. They'll be coming over. We'll be talking about planting trees to keep our Tree City USA Award requirements and everything. And we'll probably do that around 12:30 in the afternoon. They have a two-hour window to be able to come over, bring about 30 students from Cutts over. They'll be walking over. So, I just want to give everybody opportunity, if they're available, to attend.
Can I speak to the first responder? Memo?
Yes, of course. Sorry, thank you.
No, I, you know, I, I understand the concept. I think it's a fantastic concept. I think getting volunteers and giving them incentive, I think, is great. I, looking at the 31 pages, it just seems like it's a bureaucratic nightmare. The, the, you know, keeping records, and was the volunteer active? Were they disabled? Were they disabled during an emergency event, or were they disabled during a non-emergency event? Who's keeping time records? It's just, it just rings of Congress, and, no offense, don't, don't take me wrong, anyway, especially Stefan, I know there was a lot of work went into it, but here's just my question, just to make life simple, which is not easy to do in this day and age. Couldn't we just say to the first responders that you put an ad in the paper, wherever you want, and tell any one of the volunteers, and they pass all the tests, and they're here six months later, we'll give them $1,000. And the first responders, fire company, whatever, comes in and says, "We had two, it's $2,000", and I say, I make a motion, we pay them the $2,000. And it's done, instead of this record-keeping, 31 pages, and then, and it's a scoring system, too, how many points you had, and, so that's my comment. Take it for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
But just, just kind of build on that. If you look at, while it is complex, what would be the impact on our budget next year? Do we, do we need to add...
We don't know that yet, yeah.
Well, since, if we, again, I don't want them coming in in October saying, "Oh, I need X money from you for this program." So, I just want to make sure, do we put a placeholder in, or...
It would be paying out, it would be a reduction in our earned income tax and what our, what our local municipal tax receipts are. We don't know that yet.
Would apply only to real estate taxes?
Earned income tax.
Not your, not your municipal services tax.
No, not, you may, no, but the municipal tax.
Yes.
And earned income tax.
Yes.
And it would be for first responders and fire people who live in the township and/or who are providing services in the township.
Okay.
So, we don't know what, how many people that is, or, whatever that is. We don't know the numbers there, or what that impact would be on our budget. I, so, but that's the...
No, I can appreciate that, I understand, but should we...
Should we put a number?
We can talk about it in the budget. Okay.
$100, I don't even know that.
I don't know.
And when I go to the meetings with the other municipalities, those are the things I want to be able to take back to the other municipalities, because, and they're also looking to the fire, the state fire marshal to provide information as well. So, in the example you gave with the points that were established by the other municipality that's been working on this for a while, yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to be everybody working together, the municipalities.
It's very complex.
Yeah, it really is.
Rick is right. It's a very complex formula.
Absolutely.
And I, again, I agree with the concept. I fully support the concept. It's, there's got to be an easier way.
All right, noted. All right. Rick, do you have any comments as a supervisor, other than the ones you already...
Previous ones were as a supervisor.
I mean, for supervisor comments.
Let the record show.
You still are.
Yeah, I thought maybe I didn't get the memo. I do want to talk about the, our water system. DTMA, Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, which supplies waters to, which supplies water to many of our residents. And as I mentioned last time, we're in the final phase of replacing all the old meters with new meters. We hope to do about, we will do about 1,000 this year, which gets us complete. We sent out the notices, and we've had 40 to 45 percent response, which is great, but we need the other 40, 50 percent to give us a call. It saves everybody a lot of time and effort. We're going to wind up sending out a second one, knocking on doors, and we'd rather not go through all that. It's going to bother you, it's going to bother us. So, we've replaced 100 or so, so far, to date. As you've probably read in the paper, we're flushing the fire hydrants, which everybody is doing. That'll be probably for another six weeks. And we did have two more houses in the Sandy Knoll Drive that showed a little bit elevation on the PFCs, PFO, FOS, and we're addressing that, we're staying with the DEP to zero in on a solution, which is moving that pipeline extension down Sawmill Road, which we all authorized the DTMA to do. That's going well, and it goes out to bid next month, so, in May, I'm sorry, it goes out to bid in May. So, we'll, we'll get that pipe down Sawmill Road, and we'll be able to supply those in need with fresh DTMA water.
So, that will supply all those that we are, that they're monitoring right now?
It will supply all those that we are monitoring right now, who are interested in hooking up.
Right, but I mean, it serves the whole area.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anything else, Rick?
No, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Sean, do you have anything?
Just to reiterate your earlier comments, please come out and support the performing arts program for the summer, for the park, part of our Park and Rec program. And besides the movies and all that and the fun stuff, also, our EAC continues to have plenty of cleanup days and planning days ahead, and there's no real excuses, because the weather's so good, and, and, a lot of, many hands make light work, so we'd appreciate everybody's turn out.
Thanks.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Ken?
No, no, and the main thing I wanted to talk about was the radar, and we covered that, so, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, the telecommunications advisory board is working with the building fund committee to create a video that will be onsite to explain to the residents what we're doing and why, and what, what's going to be all involved. So, Ken and I are involved in that, and I thank Ed Ivanbok, who, and Dave Lawson, who is working real hard to put that together. And the bicentennial committee has authorized me to ask the board to participate in the bicentennial celebration by creating, for the first meeting of the Board of Supervisors for January 2018, at Reorganization, have a meeting that would have taken place in 200 years ago, including customs.
At the Wheelwright Building?
No, not at the Wheelwright Building, but we'll pretend we're at the Wheelwright Building here. And we will, I'll script it so that we will be having the meeting as if, Old English, you know, testimony, and regarding, you know, concerns of 200 years ago, and, and that sort of thing. But I need the whole board to participate in that, you know, effort.
I can't call in from Philadelphia like I did last year.
No, you can, you have to be here.
You have to ride your pony up.
You have to be wearing a wig. And one of the salient facts would be that I would not be able to participate, because women were not participating in local government.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, okay. Or voting.
You'd be complaining.
We're voting, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they wouldn't probably let me in the room. All right, so what do you think, guys?
I anxiously await more detail.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. I'll keep you posted. We'll do some historical research. All right, unfinished business, request from the tax collector, Sarah Thomason's memo, email, email is back before us. Sarah's here. What's the board's pleasure? You have questions, concerns?
Yes, I had questions. I had one question for Sarah, and thank you for coming, and it was more on the return check fee. What does the bank charge you today for return checks?
Right now, I don't...
You have to come up, sorry, you have to come up and identify yourself and speak to the microphone.
Sorry, Sarah Thomason. Right now, the first year I was collector, I was charged, I want to say, $15 by the bank for a return check, and then we, I renegotiated with the bank so that I'm no longer charged that fee. So, at this time, presently, I'm not charged for a return check by the bank.
Then...
But I was for the first year. So, for those checks, I had to personally pay the bank fee back to the bank to make the tax amounts whole.
But if you're not getting charged the fee, why are you asking for a fee?
Because it's a lot of administrative work with, with return checks. There is a fee in, if there's a lot of time involved, a lot of effort to get it out of the system, to read mail, I mail letters, I call the tax collector, there's, it's just a lot of administrative work, to be honest.
Wouldn't that just fall under your salary that you get? I mean, that's part of doing the job.
Well, I think pretty much every business gets return checks, and I know every business I go to, if you bounce a check, they charge you for it. So, I think it's just a cost of doing business. So I think it's just a cost of doing business in that way, if that's what you mean.
I, I, I mean, if you have to process something, I mean, you're getting, you're getting paid to process work. And, but if there's no additional fee for the return check, I'm not, I'm having a hard time to understand why you should collect a fee for something you're not getting charged for. That's all. I don't know where the money goes. I mean, you get paid to do work, that's all. I don't, to me, it's work.
But it's more work if somebody pays with a bad check.
Right.
Because she has to then reissue the paperwork or, I mean, I can see that that's more work than someone who just pays on time with a good check. Don't you think?
Yeah, but she, but she already has compensated the salary. I mean, that's what she's getting paid for.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming she sent, speak if I'm wrong, but sends out a bill, the bill comes back paid with a check. The check's no good, she has to send out the bill again, saying, "You got a bad check here, you have to pay this with a good check."
Yeah.
That's an extra thing that she has to do.
Okay.
Don't you think? I mean, is that right? It's an extra thing?
I'm not, I'm not debating that there's not more work, but.
My question about your, your request, Sarah, is that you have fee up to forty dollars, fee up to ten dollars, and a fee up to thirty dollars. So are you charging forty dollars, ten dollars, and thirty dollars? You're charging somewhere in between zero and those numbers?
Somewhere between zero and that high number. When I spoke with other collectors, I asked what their language was, and they had said that they had either "not to exceed" or "up to." Those were the two most common phrases that I heard that other collectors had in their resolutions, which is why I included that specific language. And I think I mirrored the language of the existing resolution when I did it initially.
Okay. So she's asking for a fee up to forty dollars for tax certification, additional ten dollars apiece for a duplicate bill request, and a charge of up to thirty dollars for each payment that is returned by the bank is not able to be paid. What do you think? I'm okay with this. I just, I'll make the motion that this be approved.
I would like to see the tax certification around thirty bucks. I think it was forty's at the upper end. I'm okay with the ten and the thirty.
Okay, so the, Mr. Snyder's asking that you charge a fee no more than thirty dollars for tax certification, ten dollars for the duplicate bill request, and thirty dollars for each return check. Is that okay?
Well, I had asked for up to forty because, as I did the analysis, there are collectors that even charge more than forty. So when I asked for forty, the thought was that I can increase it incrementally over time, rather than, you know, I don't intend to go from twenty to forty, but I want to have the ability to increase this over time. So that's why I had initially asked for forty.
Sarah, just for, to put it into perspective, are we talking about a hundred dollars a year or ten thousand dollars a year?
I honestly don't have those numbers with me, because I had responded to Mr. Snyder's email with information on that, and I think I had CC'd the board on it, and I honestly just don't have those numbers with me today.
Yeah, I don't know if it, if it said how much the cost would be, but, yeah, Mr. Snyder spent the most of the time, as you well know, working on this, so I'll, I'll accede to whatever he wants to make a motion for.
Well, I'd like to make the motion that it's thirty for tax certification, ten dollars for the duplicate bill, and thirty for the return check.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're limited to that one item.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, I do have one other thing. Do you know what percent, if you don't, if you could send it to us, I think it'd be great. What percent of our residents pay and get the two percent discount?
Okay, so do you want number, percent of parcel numbers, or, because sometimes, just of each, of each bill, like how many each?
You have six thousand bills.
Right.
Of the six thousand, five thousand, you get the discount, a thousand, don't get the discount.
Okay, yeah, I can get that.
I appreciate that.
I can give you for the last three years, obviously. We're in the middle of discount now.
No, yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a feel for how many pay the discount.
I do think it's a very high percentage. I want to, I want to say just, I want to say it's close to eighty-five percent, but I'll check those numbers.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the medical marijuana ordinance, and Judy Stern-Goldstein's here to explain the ordinance as drafted now that we would have to advertise.
Yes. There's a memo in your packet.
Yep.
Dated March 27th. And this memo outlines the draft ordinance as we prepared and has been modified with discussions with the planning commission. Essentially, we're adding a few definitions: medical marijuana, medical marijuana act, medical marijuana dispensary, and medical marijuana grower slash processor. And all those definitions refer back to Act 16 in 2016, which is the Medical Marijuana Act in Pennsylvania. And then we create two new uses. Use E20 would be a medical marijuana dispensary. The language is very similar to the state, actually identical in many cases to what state permits. And then the second use would be a G18, medical marijuana, marijuana grower slash processor. And that would be an industrial type use, because growing and processing by Act 16 has to be combined, so that puts it into a manufacturer or industrial use with the use regulations. And then the districts where those uses would be permitted, the medical marijuana dispensary would be permitted in your commercial districts, much as a pharmacy would be, because it's considered a retail use. And the G18 medical marijuana grower processor would be in the LI, which is your industrial district, because it is an industrial type use.
And before Judy mentions, if the state statute says you have to treat these two uses as you would other similar commercial or industrial uses, you can't exclude them from a commercial district on the pretense that it's, you know, like marijuana processing or you don't like marijuana medical sales, so.
That's the requirement.
And there's another requirement for it to be within a thousand, cannot be within a thousand.
There's other restrictions.
Restrictions, but that's a big one in school or daycare.
There are many restrictions. The one thousand feet is a big one. Who can actually dispense the medical marijuana? What form the medical marijuana can take? In this case, in Pennsylvania, it's oils and creams only, no edibles, no.
No brownies.
No smokeables.
No.
No Jaffa brownies.
Inhalers.
Right.
And just for.
And the growing and processing has to be inside.
For redification, you and I spoke, and Stefan spoke, and I just want to get the rest of the board. But these three locations, if a school is put in each one of these three locations next year, and we have no place in our township where it would meet the requirements for medical marijuana, we're still okay. We don't have to make adjustments. We have just essentially blocked out marijuana plants.
Well, first of all, when you say three locations, the three LI districts are the ones you're referring to, correct?
Yeah.
So the three areas of the township of LI district do exist. The Medical Marijuana Act, Act 16, says that you have to treat the growing and processing as an industrial type use, so it would be permitted in our industrial district. If a school pops in, or a daycare pops in, and all of those parcels are then within a thousand feet before a grower/processor comes in, then a grower/processor would not be able to be in those districts. So we would still comply with state, because we're permitting it just as we are any other use in that district. It's a state regulation for the one thousand feet. The township's not imposing that separately. So it would still be okay. We did look at the three areas of LI. Two of the areas would have parcels that would comply with the one thousand feet. One area, the LI closest to 263 and Swamp Road, would not qualify because there is a daycare facility in Temple today, which is within one thousand feet of that site, or that district, I should say.
And another one planned, perhaps, for the corner?
Perhaps in that district, yes.
Yes. Okay. Well, is there a motion to advertise the ordinance for public hearing?
I'll make that motion to advertise.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. I know the planning commission and I drove you nuts, but it was, well.
She's such a liar.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is a request from the VIA Village Improvement Association to waive the permit fee of one hundred dollars for a sign. Is there a motion to approve that waiver?
I make a motion, we approve the request to waive the permit fee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You. National Joint Powers Alliance. Dave, do you want to speak to this, or we just?
All right, well, we both can.
Okay.
This is similar to the Co-Stars program. This is a, National Joint Powers Alliance comes out of, actually, Minnesota, and is making its way to the East Coast at this point. It is a national cooperative purchasing ability for municipalities, schools, things of that nature, to be able to piggyback on existing bids and things that the National Joint Powers Alliance has done. Newtown Township currently is a member, and we spoke, Dave and I both spoke, to Kurt Ferguson, who is the township manager, who highly recommends our consideration of joining and what they refer to as NJPA. They have found it to be very beneficial regarding public works, their fuel storage, and also parks' equipment and things of that nature. And they found that most of the vendors that they're dealing with are in the local Bucks-Montgomery area. I know Jeff, being their solicitor as well as ours, we also spoke with, Jeff and I spoke, and he found it, that they're finding great luck with it. So we feel with the building project that we're doing and other projects that we do, that this could be very beneficial to us.
Is there a motion?
You're not required to use them, but just another opportunity.
Exactly. It doesn't cost us anything.
You have an application fee, it's nominal, though.
Is there a motion to approve us joining the National Joint Power? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, land development of the Metro Storage.
The next matter is your consideration of the Plumnerys Final Land Development Plan for the Metro Storage Facility located on Tax Parcel 9-19-5. As you know from past discussions with the board and this applicant's appearance before the zoning hearing board and your planning commission, the applicant proposes to remove several buildings on the Karosi site, so that people know what I'm talking about, and to construct two storage unit buildings.
One, one building.
One. Somewhere I saw two different descrip.
Yeah, there's a two-story and a three-story, and.
One of the reviews had it as two buildings.
Oh, yeah.
You're right. Somewhere along the line, that did come out. It is one building, yeah.
Additional improvements will include off-street parking. Access will not be off of Duane Road, but off of Eastern Road. The existing billboard will remain. Plans were prepared by Boller Engineering, were dated February 3, 2017, and were last revised March 24, 2017. Your planning commission, as meeting held on February 27, recommended approval subject to certain conditions. Subsequent to that meeting, the applicant did submit revised plans, which addressed most of the comments from the various reviewing agencies. If your board was inclined to approve this application as the, as a Plumnerys Final Land Development approval, I have the enumerated conditions if you are ready to hear that, or I see you shaking the head here. Compliance with Boucher &amp; James report dated April 5, 2017. Compliance with the decision of the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board on October 25, 2016. Applicants requested a waiver from provisions of elements of our landscape and buffer requirements, one related to the plantings from the recommended plant list, the other is street trees, the other is tree replacement. As you know, the site is difficult, and obviously, we all know the site is, has a long checkered history. Applicant proposes to not install a bike path, but to pay a fee in lieu, and I believe the amount agreed upon by the applicant and the various agencies reviewing it was six thousand dollars. This recommendation was made by your park and rec, and, I mean, your bike and hike panel. Compliance to the Penotti Report dated April 5, 2017, except the applicant requests a waiver from the provisions of the ordinance, which will require a traffic study, and he'll raise the question of how much that should be. Compliance with the Boucher, pardon me, Pickering Course Summer Review Letter dated April 10, including the waivers noted on page two. Compliance with the SE Engineers Letter dated February 14, 2017. Compliance with the Michael Baker National Review Letter dated April 10, 2017. Compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission Report dated February 16, 2017. Applicant to pay an off-site improvement fee of twenty-five cents per thousand square feet of office, of space. Funding executed on financial security agreements. Receipt of all permits approved, many agencies having jurisdiction, including Conservation District and Pendot. Applicant to pay all expenses associated with the application incurred by the township. Plans shall be ADA compliant. Now, John, do you have a proposal on the fee in lieu of the traffic study?
Yeah. Cutting to the bottom line, we're willing to offer twenty-five hundred dollars, although, as I argued to the planning commission, we didn't think we should be required to pay a fee in lieu, since we're on one state highway here, but we're willing to do that in, as an offer of compromise.
I don't understand what you just said and what.
Well, Pendot ordinarily requires a traffic study, and when we have a Pendot permit, the township normally accepts the traffic study we prepare for Pendot. In this case, Pendot did not require a traffic study. But we're willing to offer twenty-five hundred dollars in lieu of the traffic study that we didn't have to prepare for Pendot, essentially.
When you're front eight state road, Pendot has priority and jurisdiction over the highway improvements, and they have elected not to require a traffic study. But John is suggesting they will reimburse the township twenty-five hundred dollars as a token of good faith that the township recognized the Pendot's primary position on this, and he's just accepting my suggestion that he, that he helped the township out with respect to a contribution.
Actually, Mr. Heilmann is willing to accept your suggestion.
But without, without the, the traffic study, you do know what the traffic volume is in and out of, as a plan to be for the site?
Yeah, and it's very low. I mean, that, that was in our report. Bob?
You can't speak unless you get to the microphone. They'll come out and like yell at you.
I think what Bob's going to say is that because the traffic volume was so low, Pendot didn't require the traffic study.
Thank you, Bob.
Well said.
I think it's a very fair offer. You've been very bending over backwards with the bike and hike committee. You've been very supportive of everything. So I'm, I at least am willing to take that fair offer of twenty-five hundred dollars.
We're, Crete doesn't have a lot of space. We have a place to go.
All right.
That's a consensus, we'll accept twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm okay with that.
John, assuming the board was willing to approve the Plumnerys Final Plan of your client's application, do you accept those conditions?
I do. They've been reviewed by Mr. Heilmann, and they're all acceptable.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve plans as stated based on the agreements.
Plumnerys Final Plans, only to the conditions.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks for all your help. I do appreciate it.
And good riddance to the existing Karosi program.
Hit the planning module for them as well, that's next. They may only move so fast. All right, don't leave too quickly. You're up next.
They need approval for the planning modules.
Oh, you may not get this, so, you may be paying us more money. All right, approval for the sewage facilities for the planning module. Has everyone had a chance to look at this? Do you care?
No, I mean, it's routine.
It is very routine.
Mary was happy.
Mary is okay with it. All right, we're good. Is there a motion to approve the planning module?
Move to approve the sewage facility planning module.
And there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you again.
You're welcome to go now. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, row materials bid for 2017 is a memo from Mr. Tomko, dated April 13. Everyone had a chance to look at this. All right, is there a motion to approve the Eureka Stone Quarry, Hanson Aggregates, and Heeway LLC Miller Materials and Clemson Materials in accordance with the bids?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Sign materials and bid post for, post-bid for 2017, again, memo from Dave Tomko, dated April 13. We need a motion to approve the purchase of the sign materials for, and post from Chumong Supply Custom Products, Garden State Highway, US Municipal Supply, in accordance with the bids submitted.
I just had one question on that. I was just curious what this is in comparison to what we spent in '16.
The award amount for '16 totaled approximately $10,695.20 spread out amongst Chumong Custom Products Corporation and Garden State Highway. US Municipal did not have any bid, so, about $10,000.
Okay.
So, we're at 70 approximately the cost. This is an estimated on the amount of material we think we're gonna buy?
Yeah.
At about 7,700.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's it then. Treasurer's report for April 18, 2017 was received electronically, so everyone had a chance to review it.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for April 18, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, announcements for our next meeting on May 2 at 4. The bicentennial committee is meeting on May 2 at 3:00 p.m. Community yard sale, April 29, 8 to 1, 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Central Park Tennis Court Parking Lot. Shoppers are free, if you're a vendor, it's $25. Touch Truck, Saturday, May 6, Central Park, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., it's free. Home Run Derbies, May 18, 2017, at Turk Baseball Field. Check-in at 4:30, the Derby's at 5, it's free, but you gotta pre-register. Okay, the Thompson Performing Arts Series begins May 19 with the movie Moana at 8:30 with Polynesian Dance Interaction at 7:30, and then followed by June 2, The Secret Life of Pets, sponsored by the Doylestown Animal Medical Clinic, D-A-M-C, and that is on same timing, like around 8:30 at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park. The Doylestown Township Annual Golf Outing, June 5, 2017, registration deadline is May 15, it's an AM start. The Environmental Advisory Council, Magnet fundraising is ongoing with $5 for Magnet. And e-cycling event through PAR Recycling Works is June 3 from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. There's one other announcement, I just remembered, is that the bicentennial committee is meeting on May 2 at 2:30 instead of 3, so I'm gonna make that public change, 2:30 in the afternoon instead of 3. Okay, that's it, we have stuff to sign. We are adjourned, everyone, thank you very much. Thank you. Bye, Mr. O'Malley.